Okay, before I call, there's two items. In case you didn't get the email earlier, when I do call your name, please say here and then provide the city and county that you are located. And also, Sir Jones Chance has requested that I not address him as council member. So in roll call, I'll be just calling Mr. Jones Chance.
Okay.
All right. Councilmember Will Coxon. Mayor Pete Tom Brown.
Present in Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Somerville.
Present, Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson.
Present, Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County, and I'm at home.
Councilmember Morgan.
Evening, present, Ypsilanti City, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present in Ypsilanti, the city of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Present, city of Ypsilanti, county of Washtenaw.
With six present, there is a quorum.
All right, thank you. And the reason I sit in my home was on the Simcock meeting the other day on Friday. We had to identify the place too. So anywhere, whatever, Mr. Bauer has given the, I think, all of what we need.
Can I make a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse, please.
He's here.
To excuse, he's here now, but he missed roll call, so.
Hello, I'm here.
Motion to excuse, Councilmember Will Coxon.
No, happy, he's here now.
We don't? Okay.
And I'm attending from my home in Ypsilanti, in Washtenaw County, Michigan.
I don't believe you.
Well.
I'm just kidding, I just can't see you, so it's.
Where are you?
Over here.
Oh, there you are, okay.
With all present, there is a quorum.
All right, thank you.
Council, next item on the agenda is agenda approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Support.
Mayor, we have a motion and a support for agenda approval.
All in favor.
All right.
All right, council, next item on the agenda is public comment. Currently seven listed in the, or eight listed in the attendee list. If you'd like to make comment, please raise your hand and then you will have three minutes to address council. The first individual with their hand raised is T. Marquet. I'll allow them to speak now.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
My name is Tracy Marquet. I called in about a month ago about an issue that I'm having with my. My winter taxes normally run eighty dollars, eighty-six dollars at the most. I was assessed a seven hundred and fifty dollar pass due fine on my taxes. Mind you, these taxes, I've paid taxes on time every year for the last ten years I've had this property. Okay? But this fine, when I called in, is back from 2016 and 2018. I don't know who dropped the ball. I don't know what has happened, but I find it very odd that in the middle of a pandemic, people have lost their jobs, can't afford this and afford that, that they found the time four years later to put a seven hundred and fifty dollar snow removal on my taxes. So to me, as these times that we're going through right now, I left Ms. Mullen an email yesterday. I've talked to Andrew about it, and you mean to tell me there's nothing that nobody could do? Nobody has even reached out to me from the last city council meeting. So I'm a black man, so what do I think when I see this? I see this as a property grab. That's what I see. In these times that we're in right now, you mean to tell me somebody can push a button and put seven hundred and fifty dollar charge on my taxes when I haven't been notified at all? I've been a product of good guys finish last all my life, and I fought for everything I have. I am the executive protection to the president of the UAW. Okay, I've been through three different presidents in the last four years. I've worked hard. I am a reserve sheriff out of Wayne County. Chief Clayton wrote me the letter to get into the academy. I have took care of my bills. I would never let a bill go for this many years and not take care of it. It's just not me. I'm not that irresponsible. You can't be irresponsible and go through three different presidents and they keep you with the UAW. So I'm trying to find out who can help me. Because right now, I'm upset. No one's reached out, and everybody says that the same way somebody clicked that button to put that seven hundred and fifty dollars on my taxes is the same way somebody can click it. Now, granted, if there was an original fine of a seventy-five dollars on both occasions, I have no problem with paying that. But you mean to tell me seven hundred and fifty dollars? Seven hundred and fifty dollars? I could get snow removed out of a Kmart parking lot and probably wouldn't have to pay that much. So I'm looking for somebody to help me. Somebody can help me do something. And I've reached out to my ex-roommates, Anthony Williamson, Pastor Harold Wimbley. We went to Eastern Michigan together. So I've reached out to them, they've reached out to a couple of people, and I get nothing, still nothing. They're saying there's nothing that they can do. Come on. I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marquet.
Council, the next individual with their hand raised is Larry. I'll allow them to speak now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. This is Larry Yap, thirty-two forty-two North Huron. Responding again, reminding you of the issues in the North Huron Alley. So I was being nice to remind you that the North Huron Alley issues will not go away by ignoring them. Contrary to arguments made, the neighborhood complaint to the city over obstructions existing in a public alley cannot by definition be private. Contrary to arguments made, the lawsuit against the city did not decide that there was no fault on the part of the city. It wasn't even discussed. Contrary to arguments made, the ongoing portion of the lawsuit is separate from the issues caused by the city. The city made false statements in legal documents prepared by the city as part of the lawsuit. The city claimed the city does not allow structures to be built without permits in violation of the city code of ordinances. The truth? The city refuses to address unpermitted construction behind twelve and twenty-four North Huron, and it is not owned construction either. The city claimed the extent that the plaintiff's ability to access his property through the disputed alley, the obstructions are not put in place by the city of Ypsilanti. The truth? The city issued a permit in nineteen eighty-six authorizing the twenty-two North Huron stair obstruction, which is equivalent to being put in place by the city itself. As an aside, each of these structures was built on city land without the approval of the city council and is in violating of the private property owners' underlying easement. I'll leave you with two proverbs. There are two sides to every story. Reading documents prepared by the city, it is evident they don't understand the other side of the story. The other is due to others as you would have them to you. It's the same request I've been making. No one will talk to me, no one will reach out to me, no one is working on these problems. And it's really, it's really exhausting, and I would appreciate if someone from the city would engage and start to actually make some progress on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Council, that was the last individual with their hand raised.
All right. Mr. Bauer, is there any thing that we can do to help? Well, I guess in both situations, but particularly in Mr. Marquet's situation. I'm not, I don't know, you know, all the ins and outs of the tax, taxes or the assessments from snow removal and that. That does seem an excessive amount for snow removal.
Mayor, I can look into it tomorrow if you'd like.
All right, if you would, please. Okay, and Clerk Halanga, you and I had talked about sending a letter to Mr. Marquet. Did we get that letter sent?
I haven't yet, but I have his email address now. I'm going to be sending the judgments, the lien documents, and the initial citation to him tomorrow. I already have myself.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any other councilperson have a comment on either?
I just wanted to say, Mayor, I know with Mr. Larry Yap and with this new case, it does get disheartening over time, knowing that it seems that people feel helpless and hopeless that we can't aid them. And I know we all, our top priority is assisting our citizens. So I would like to know how I can help. I know sometimes sending emails get lost in the shuffle, but I really would like some, because we do help a lot of people, but unfortunately, you know, we get to hear some of these parts where we're not as helpful. So I would like to know how I can help.
Okay, I would too. Mr. Bauer, can I give you a call on that tomorrow? I have some ideas. I don't want to put them out there at the meeting, but some ideas that maybe we can look into.
Yes, I'll be available tomorrow, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Okay. All right, Clerk Halanga.
Council, the next item on the agenda is a presentation regarding the June thirtieth, twenty twenty comprehensive financial presentation by Raymond. Daniel Clark is here from Raymond, and I will make you a co-host, Mr. Clark, so that you can share your screen.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Clark.
My pleasure. Give me one moment as I get my screen ready. All right, is that visible to everyone?
Yes.
Okay. So again, my name is Daniel Clark. I'm the principal on the city of Ypsilanti audit engagement. So we completed the June thirtieth, twenty twenty audit of the financial statements that was issued back in December by the June thirtieth deadline. A couple of agenda items tonight. Just going to briefly introduce the team members that were part of the engagement, talk about some required board communications, go over some very high-level financial results, and then talk about upcoming accounting pronouncements that may or may not affect the city's financial statements moving forward, and then open it up for any questions. But during the presentation, feel free to ask them as they come along. Sometimes it's more appropriate and easy to answer as they come up, so feel free to stop me. So I was the signing principal. We had Taylor Schaefer, who was the senior on the engagement, and Cody Goldsworthy, that was the staff. This was a similar team to prior year, so we were thankful to be able to keep that consistency of the audit team. So a couple of board communications that we present every year. So we were very happy to state that we're able to issue an unmodified or a clean opinion on your June thirtieth, twenty twenty financial statements, which if you gave it a grade, it would be an A. So that's exactly what you guys are looking for. Now, that doesn't speak to the financial health of the city, but it speaks to that the numbers and the information in your financial statements are materially correct. We're also asked to state that we did or did not implement any new accounting pronouncements, and there were no new accounting pronouncements that were implemented in fiscal year twenty. All accounting pronouncements that would have been or may have been applicable were delayed one year due to COVID as that has affected every area that I'm sure everyone is aware of. We are also asked to assess and deem estimates in the financial statements to determine whether they're reasonable and appropriate, and those things include depreciation expense, allowance on any uncollectible accounts, those inputs that go into calculating your pension and your other post-employment benefit, and we assess those and deem those all to be reasonable. We're also happy to say we did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. We were very thankful for the help that Reagan, the finance director, and his staff helped us in completing it this year. We did complete it completely remotely this year due to COVID. So that was a little extra lift for everyone involved, so we appreciate everyone's efforts in being able to complete the audit remotely. We did note two material misstatements, which were subsequently corrected and in your financial statements. One related to some accounts payable that needed to be booked back to June thirtieth that related to expenditures that were incurred prior to year end. And then we also had one that was related to a prior period adjustment, which related to some grant dollars that were previously recorded in your prior year financial statements. That subsequent, we decided that those should have been recorded in the current year financial statements. So as a result, we had a material weakness related to the adjustment and to the prior period adjustment. We also had one other matter that was related to our testing of your, sorry, one second, was related to your census testing when we tested your fire and police pension liability, and there were just some data points that were not correctly input related to that census data. It did not affect the calculation in any material respects. That's why we just noted it as an other matter, just as you move forward to make sure that those inputs are correct, to make sure that it would not at some point possibly be a material effect. So moving on to financial statement summaries. So this is at entity-wide level, so all funds. You had just under sixty million in assets at the end of fiscal year twenty. So you had fifty-nine point six-six million in assets compared to sixty-two million, seven-hundred-and-eighty thousand last year. So a decrease of just over three million dollars. You'll see the biggest changes there. You had an increase in your cash and investments, and then you had a decrease in your receivables, and that related to the long-term receivables related to your revenue, water and sewer bonds. You also had some changes in your deferred inflows and outflows related to pension and OPEB, and those fluctuate based on those inputs that come from the actuary. So at the end of twenty twenty, you also had liabilities.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question, please? I was muted.
Sure.
Okay, back to the screen you had just before this one, or I guess you've got some here. What are deferred outflows and inflows?
So those relate to, those relate to calculations related to your pension and your other post-employment benefits that have not yet hit your expense line items. So they're in essence like prepaid, so like contributions that the city pays towards pension expense. Because your pension is calculated at a period of time that is before your fiscal year end, there's a timing difference between when that year end hits and when your city's year end hits. So those are timing difference calculations.
So that money is still to go out, or it has gone out?
That's related to monies that have gone out, but they haven't yet been expensed in your pension expense.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then you'll see on this side is the other side of that, the deferred inflows and outflows.
Right.
Those are liabilities that have not yet been recognized as well. So your total liabilities were just over seventy million dollars, a decrease from last year's liabilities of seventy-five million dollars. You'll see the biggest decrease was, the long-term debt decreased about two-point-six million. That's related to your annual principal payments with very little new debt added. Your other net, your net OPEB or your other post-employment benefits also went down, and that was due to some actuarial changes and estimates related to assumptions that went into calculating, including trend rates and mortality improvement and change in benefits that reflect the repeal of the excise tax under the Affordable Healthcare Act. So assets minus liabilities is your net position or your equity that split up into three different buckets. So your unrestricted was a negative fifty-nine percent, and I'll talk about why that's negative in just a minute, but that's related to your pension and your other post-employment benefit plan that were required to be put on the city's books in two thousand and fifteen and then in two thousand and eighteen. So twenty-five percent of your net position or your equity related to net investment in capital assets, and then sixteen percent related to your restricted dollars. So those dollars that were received at the end of the year that you had not yet spent on the other restricted purposes, mostly to do with grants and your special revenue funds. So now we'll look at a three-year snapshot of those different categories. So that top line is your net investment in capital assets. So that was at fifteen point two-five million at the end of the year, just a small decrease from the year before, fifteen point four-nine percent, or I'm sorry, fifteen point four million. And then that middle line are your restricted dollars, and that was just over ten million dollars at the end of this year compared to ten point two at the end of last year. And this is your unrestricted, so that bottom line shows that negative number I was speaking to you about. So at the end of the year, you had negative thirty-five point seven million in unrestricted compared to thirty-eight point zero five last year. If you were to take out the effects of your pension and your other post-employment benefit, at the end of the year, you'd actually be sitting at a two-point-two positive number. But obviously, since those liabilities are the responsibility of the city over the life of the retirees, those liabilities were required to be put on your books back again in two thousand and fifteen and then in two thousand and eighteen.
I ask a question about the last slide, now two slides back. That increase in the restricted funds from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, that was a result of a presentation. So prior to last year in two thousand and nineteen, we, the city was not required to restrict pension assets. So that's when pension assets were turned into a restricted category, and that's why it jumped up.
Thanks.
So now just moving on to the P and L or your profit and loss. At the, for two thousand and twenty, you had just over twenty-one million dollars in revenue compared to eighteen point nine in expenses. Last year, you had twenty million in revenue with twenty-two million in expenses. And this is NAU-wide, so this takes into account all those changes in your pension and your OPEB. So that's why when your OPEB went down significantly this year, it actually was a pickup in your expense category. And then we'll talk briefly about your major revenue line items, so that top line are your taxes and special assessments. For two thousand and twenty, you had eleven point three million in property taxes and special assessments, which is an increase from two thousand and nineteen of just over eleven million. And then your intergovernmental, so those revenues such as your state and your federal dollars, you had a small increase to eight point six million compared to eight point five million last year. And then the city also has licenses and permits, so that dropped to nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, so a small dip from last year. Your charges for services went from five hundred and sixty-three thousand to nine hundred and forty, or I'm sorry, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, and your fines and forfeitures went from five hundred and forty-two thousand to four hundred and fifty-four thousand. I know those dips were mostly related to COVID, and obviously certain fines and forfeitures and licenses and permits were significantly either delayed or just not happening, which is very similar to what we're seeing in other cities as well.
Mr. Clark, I have a question. Were we talking about the charges for services on that spike from five sixty-three to nine seventy-two? Is what was our major, what major charge made that jump so high? Does it determine?
I could get that information for you. I don't have that right offhand unless Reagan, if Reagan's on the line, if he has that answer to that.
Yes.
I was curious about that, curious about that also.
You can send it to us in the email if you don't have it right on hand, Reagan.
Yeah, I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was mainly for our internal service funds, because we did increase our charges for the use of our motor pool. So, but we can just go ahead and take a look at that for more details.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then we'll just speak briefly about your general fund. Obviously, that's where most of your general operations go through. You'll see at the end of, or for two thousand and twenty, you had fifteen point, just under fifteen point eight million in revenue compared to just under fourteen point eight million in expenses. You'll see the last three years, your revenue exceeded your expenses in each three years. So that's a very positive sign that you're building a little bit of cushion in your fund balance. And then this is your general fund coverage ratio, so this shows how much of expenditures are sitting in your fund balance. So we calculate this in months. So at the end of two thousand and twenty, you had about three and a half months in your fund balance, which is an increase from just over three months last year. And benchmark here, traditionally, we recommend that there be no less than three months. Anything under that, there potentially could be some cash flow situation problems. I'm not saying that there would be, but that's a good benchmark to try to keep above that three-month threshold. And then just briefly, upcoming accounting pronouncements. There's a lot on the horizon, but most of these will have little to no impact on the city. You'll see Gatsby eighty-seven is the only one that doesn't have an NA after it that's related to leases. So any leases that are considered operating in nature, which just get expensed as they get paid, those will actually become liabilities on the books over the life of the lease. And then Gatsby eighty-four, which is the fiduciary activities. That was going to be applicable for your fiscal year twenty, but due to COVID, as I mentioned at the beginning, all counting pronouncements were delayed one year. So this one will be looked at for your fiscal year twenty-one, and potentially any fiduciary activities might be changed into special revenue funds, but we'll be working with the city to make sure that those are properly reclassified if appropriate. So with that, I can open it up for any questions.
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Clark. The question that I had, I'll be waiting for the information from Mr. Basabika. I just want to say thank you, Reagan, for getting those numbers in order, and I appreciate the audit.
Any other questions? Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Thank you again, Mr. Clark, for coming and giving us the presentation. And if I, if I took all of that correctly, the city's in pretty good shape.
I would say that's a correct statement, yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, if not, Mr. Halanga, let's move on with the charter.
Council, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Support.
But I have to read that.
Oh.
He still has to read it, yes.
Everybody hates it tonight. They said. I'm sorry, I just read them right before, I read them right before you started, and in my mind, you had read them already.
Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero one one approving the minutes of January fifth, twelfth, fourteenth, and nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Resolution number two thousand and twenty-one dash zero one two approving appointments to boards and commissions.
I will accept your motion and second.
Don't move.
Are you, who's seconding this time?
Oh, sorry, support.
Okay.
Yeah, I was backwards, my bad.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. We need a roll call vote for the consent agenda.
All right, Mayor Pro Tom Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Motion's approved unanimously.
All right, thank you.
Council, moving on to the next section, resolutions, motions, and discussions. The first resolution is resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one three. It is resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that whereas the U.S. Constitution and the Michigan Constitution protect the right of persons to keep and bear arms, and whereas the right is not absolute, but can be subject to reasonable and needed restrictions. And whereas the Michigan Legislature has passed laws controlling arms, but be but denying municipalities similar powers. And whereas the state of Michigan Capitol Commission has recently banned long guns from the state Capitol. And whereas the Ypsilanti City Council believes that the restriction is reasonable and needed for the safety and well being of persons in the state. And whereas the same safety and well being concerns applied to persons in the Ypsilanti City Hall and other municipal properties summarily situated. Now therefore, the Ypsilanti City Council does hereby request the Michigan Legislature to pass legislation with all convenience viewed to allow local municipalities to ban long guns and open carry from legislative council chambers and public areas and other municipal facilities for the safety and well being of all persons. And further that the governor sign and approve the legislation as soon as presented. And further that a copy of this resolution be provided to the clerk of the Michigan Senate, House of Representatives, the governor, and the city lobbyists.
Move.
Support.
Okay, it's been properly moved and supported. Mr. Morgan, this was your resolution. Do you have, do you want to talk about it for a minute or two?
Well, uh, it's been no, I've been no stranger to attempting to reduce guns in City Hall in the last couple of years, and it's kind of because of the state's statute has been nullified each time. But again, as a person who's been a victim of gun abuse, and I it's a complicated, it's complicated because, you know, again, the Second Amendment right. However, I do believe the municipal workers and people who consider themselves in government and helping government function. It's a duty that we have to protect each other. It's a duty for us to keep the government running, to make the policy. And I do think there are times when there's heated exchanges between citizens and ourselves and all across the country. And I do think by limiting weapons in City Hall is being preemptive and 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 not reactionary, but as a way to protect everybody involved. And so I brought this up because I think there are times where we have some heated discussions within council with citizens. We have some very dynamic emotional contextual situations. And if anybody in when, as I'm on the bench, if anyone had a gun in those situations open, when this, I would be a little nervous. I would be understandably, probably not as focused on my job as I as I would need to be. So those are my my case, and I hope that you guys can find it to support it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Ms. Somerville.
Oh, yes. I just wanted to let you all know that I know a guy working on introducing some legislation to allow local units of government to regulate this. Just wanted to loop you in on that. Hasn't been introduced yet, but it will be.
You know a guy?
I know a guy.
You just happen to know something.
I might happen to be the legislative director, so I might know.
I might know.
You might know a guy, okay.
Yeah, I might know that we requested a bill. So.
Yeah, very good. I was told a long time ago, it's not always what you know, but who you know, Mr. Wilcoxen.
I know that same guy, actually. Probably not quite so well. No, I think this is great. You know, watching stuff that's been happening in the last couple of months just just reinforces this. I've always thought this is a great idea. You know, there shouldn't be a need to have a gun in that setting. And, you know, watching, watching people come into work and have their lives be endangered by people with guns is is just ridiculous. And we can do this if we can get this to go, and we can do this about City, City Hall. I mean, you know, I think that should be an option in lots of places that it's not an option right now. So hopefully this will, that guy that she knows can do something about that. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Hey, I think we all need to write a letter to that guy supporting his efforts.
Senator Irwin welcomes your communications.
Thank you. Being one that was against the open carry law, the carry law back when in the nineties. I too really, really support this. I don't see a need for guns in our meetings or even concealed guns. Uh, open carry of any kind or concealed carry in our meeting. So I'm going to support this. And if there's no other comments or questions, would you call the call the roll? Please.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. We will see, Mr. Morgan, we will see and hold good thoughts for this resolution to be to be able to stand this time.
I'm glad to get on the agenda. I'm faithful as long overdue. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
Council, moving on to the next item, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero one four. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has hit the city of Ypsilanti and our businesses extremely hard. And whereas the public health guidance indicates that outdoor dining is safer than indoor dining and earth these outdoor spaces in two thousand twenty one. And whereas the city seeks to assist in the recovery of our small businesses when weather allows customers to return to outdoor dining. And whereas it is expected that indoor restaurant capacity will be reduced by fifty percent once allowed to reopen and vaccine distribution is not yet widely available or expected until mid to late two thousand twenty one. Now, for be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves a special event permit closing East Cross Street stretching from Rice Street to River Street, North Washington Street from Pearl to Michigan Avenue, as well as the South Washington Street between Michigan Avenue and the South Huron parking lot. The closers will, the closures would remain in effect during overnight hours and last from April first, two thousand twenty one until November first, two thousand twenty one at a cost not to exceed two thousand five hundred dollars. Amplified amplified music is only permitted on Fridays and Saturdays until ten P M. In the areas of street closure. Additionally, live amplified music is only permitted between Memorial Day and Labor Day and designated street closure areas.
So is there a motion?
Don't move.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Discussion, I guess, presentation. Mr. Jacobs, you have something for us?
Yeah, good evening, council. It's good to be with all of you, and I'm happy to bring this to your consideration. Two thousand twenty was a crazy year for everyone, but I think one of the bright spots was the successful street closures. And I've heard from a lot of business owners that they want to continue that important work to help support their businesses and as a public health measure. Given that the ongoing pandemic is really still ravaging our community and vaccine distribution has been slow, we anticipate we'll be living with this through most of two thousand twenty one. And there could be restrictions well into two thousand twenty one for indoor capacity. Knowing consumers prefer these spaces and knowing that the public street closures could help reestablish the districts as a destination once more. We are asking the Downtown Development Authority for you to consider another street closure here in two thousand twenty one. In twenty twenty, there were a number of grants provided by the DDA to help support outdoor seating. Not only on the streets, but in particular on sidewalk cafes and rear access seating. Folks like Red Rock and Quentra Latino, Tower Inn. These guys all received money from the DDA to help establish these outdoor dining areas, and we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into redoing the alley on West Cross to help support rear access seating there. I know that we learned a lot in two thousand twenty, and one of those things was about how entertainment and music needs to be regulated and how frequent that needs to happen or should be allowed to happen. And where the best location is to minimize noise nuisances to residents. I know that the the live music and entertainment part of this is perhaps the most contentious. And so I want to touch on something in the RFL to help, you know, really reiterate the process. Fortunately, the the city does have a process for regulating special event noise permits. And we recommend following that that policy. If a person or group wishes to use the street closures for live amplified music performances or events, they have to submit a special events noise or noise permit request, which is processed by the police department. We would then work with the police department to make a public calendar available on our website and to show available versus booked dates. And as the resolution states, live amplified music should only be permitted in the street closure areas on Fridays and Saturdays until ten P M. Furthermore, live music in the street closure areas is only allowed from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And like I said, there is designated areas to help minimize sound nuisance. So I'm happy to answer any questions. The DDA wanted me to thank you guys personally for the consideration and support in two thousand twenty. It'll be really important in two thousand twenty one. And so, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or further discussion?
This one, I just want clarity on where it says at a cost not to exceed twenty five hundred. What does that mean specifically?
The DDA paid twenty five hundred dollars in two thousand twenty to help offset the parking spaces that are removed from the street closure areas, knowing that the the city has a parking study and a parking strategy, and we're implementing that. We don't want to cause undue burden to the city, and we want to help offset the lost parking revenues, and that's what that.
Okay, I just want last question. And I appreciate this, Chris, of getting these street closures to help these businesses. Has there been any news, any updates from the businesses that have benefited from the street closures continuing their business during the COVID epidemic? Have any of those businesses had anybody contract COVID from those places?
Not in the outdoor dining part of the the year. There have been outbreaks related to restaurants in the city. But none related to these outdoor dining spaces. And we know they're a lot safer than the indoor dining spaces. But I am aware of a couple of restaurants that have had to close their their doors for a period of time to quarantine employees. And those were all indoor transmission cases, we believe, and the restaurants believe.
Okay.
Anyone else? Oh, yes, Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a friendly amendment to this. Actually, um, I was a little concerned by the eight month timeframe. I think that's far too long to close the streets. I'm interested in seeing if how others feel about proposing mid May to mid October instead. So that's a six month timeframe, which is a little bit longer. Honestly, I think like if this were unrelated to COVID, I would be most comfortable just doing Memorial Day to Labor Day. But I think cutting this down to six months rather than eight is something that I'm super interested in trying to accomplish tonight with a friendly amendment. I'm curious what others think.
I would support that.
Okay.
I think it should be.
I was thinking May fifteenth to October sixteenth. That's exactly Saturday to Saturday, six months. I because I also noticed, considering I live on Cross Street, that the weather was pretty cold in in October, so it didn't really get utilized that. Like, there were a few days where it was like seventy late October, but it was it was so rare that most of the days the streets weren't being used that late into the month. So I also know that, like, last year it snowed in April. So and I also wanted to mention, just for like the context of this discussion, all of these businesses have outdoor seating. So like, they'll be able to do like sidewalk, like they have other access to outdoor seating until mid May. So I just think, you know, I think it's something more reasonable because there are going to be complaints that we're going to get about traffic in the neighborhoods, in particular with with the cross street closure, the traffic up Forest, which is something that I think that we need to keep an eye on. The speeding and I got a lot of complaints about that last summer. So just wanted to include that in the context of this discussion. So, yeah, I guess I would like to make a friendly amendment to adjust the timeline from May fifteenth to October sixteenth, unless does anybody, you said you had supported, Anthony?
I would.
Cool.
All right, thank you. Discussion on the friendly amendment.
I thought Councilwoman Somerville summed it up very well eloquently. I would have started it, you know, like, yeah, May to October sounds very feasible. Or if there's a reason, Mr. Jacobs thought it should be that long. I would love to hear his reasoning.
We we thought giving folks the time to reestablish earlier, we get some nice days in May. I I would rather have the availability to do it than than not be able to when it's really nice out. But to be completely honest, we are so grateful for the support of city council in the past. And if a shorter timeline makes you folks feel comfortable with it, I would tell you the DDA board is extremely grateful for that, and we'll take what we can get honestly. So.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Jones Chance, yes.
Yeah, Chris, could you remind me, when is the date for the extension of the what's the cutoff date for the extension of the patio permits?
May. And I'll be bringing something to council. The original resolution that we were using that they were sending to MLCC was like eight years old. And so on February second, I'm looking at updating that.
Okay, so this new timeframe would possibly overlap in.
So we, I would like to consider the sidewalk cafe stuff and the street closure stuff perhaps separately. Knowing that we have plenty of leeway or runway to get that two thousand twenty one figured out well before May. In fact, like I said, on February second, I want to come bring a resolution to extend the sidewalk cafe stuff, enter the new permit year and get those folks figured out until the end of two thousand twenty one.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that there's an, there's another option as well. So, okay.
Any other questions or discussion on the amendment?
I guess I just look, we'll add one more thing. I think it helps a little bit with some of the equity concerns that were brought up last time. Because if you like, look at the amount of space available for all of the businesses with either their sidewalk availability, if they choose to, you know, extend that permit. It matches up with what like the available space that Red Rock and Tap Room would have. It seems pretty like fair across the board. Even with some of the West Cross stuff. So I think that will help with some of those concerns also.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, speaking as in order of a business who was left out of the street closure, I would agree with that.
I have possible solutions to that I that I talked to Christopher about earlier today about seven three four. So happy to talk further offline, maybe about some other options.
Okay, any other on the amendment? All right, seeing then, Mr. Ling, would you please call the role on the amendment?
Mayor, this was a friendly amendment offered by Councilmember Somerville and supported by Councilmember Morgan. So the friendly amendment has already been accepted.
Okay, so it had, we don't have to vote on friendly amendments?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Well, call a role on the on the resolution, please.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. And I'm sure the DDA will appreciate that. All right, the next item on the agenda, please.
Council, the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2021-015, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the City of Ypsilanti has identified the removal of the Peninsular Dam as a strategic priority. And whereas the Huron River Watershed Council has been awarded a grant from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources for the purpose of design removal and has selected a qualified engineering firm to provide these services. And whereas the MOU provided is necessary to define the working relationship between the City of Ypsilanti and the Huron River Watershed Council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved the MOU as provided and shall reimburse the HRWC for an amount not to exceed $33,000. Completion of approved scope of work in the MDNR FHGP grant described herein.
Is there a motion and second?
So moved.
Support.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. And Mr. Wilcoxen, do we want to hear from you on this? Or do we want to hear from Mr. Myers or Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Jacobs was going to present and then I was going to add some content to that as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Excuse me again. Council, before moving forward, several people supported that. I did not catch you who actually supported.
I know, like all three of us did.
I think.
I think Mr. Wilk, I think I heard Mr. Wilcoxen.
Anybody's fine. It doesn't matter.
I think it was Anthony.
I think it was Anthony, too.
Okay.
I was, I was muted. I was like, ah.
Fight over the second. I don't care. Just as long as somebody seconded.
I'll go to Anthony.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you. It's been a while since we've received an update on the Penn Dam project, but rest assured, Councilmember Wilcoxen, Annie, and a team of us at HRWC have been hard at work getting bids, evaluating those for the scope of work that we're going to be discussing tonight. I'll give you a brief description of what this MOU is for. Basically, in 2017, the city entered into a cooperative agreement to study the strategic removal of the Peninsular Dam. HRWC authorized, contracted for, and received a feasibility study, and the parties agreed that the goal of removing the dam was feasible. And we advanced that goal by securing a removal design and any necessary supporting analysis for the removal of the dam. That includes the environmental and financial impacts of removing the dam, the logistical and practical implication relating to such a removal, the legal effects. So HRWC is really in the best position to lead the efforts to request proposals as we've done and identified qualified engineering and other professional consultants to prepare the removal plan. The city previously committed $500,000 towards the removal of the Peninsular Dam. We anticipate the cost at this stage will be $240,600. Most of that is provided by a grant that was awarded by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Fisheries Habitat Grant Program. The amount that the city is looking at in this stage is 33,000 and the amount that HRWC is going to be providing is 6,000. The awarded funds from the grant require all proposed project work to be completed by October of 2021. There have been pretty big delays in the public engagement part of this due to COVID. And so we fully anticipate, we've been in contact with those folks at the grant agency to talk about extensions, and it's already pretty much a foregone conclusion that that won't be a problem. And they understand the situation that we're in because of COVID. The attached MOU is provided by Mr. Barr's office. I thank him for that. I could take any questions you folks have or describe a little bit more about where we are in the bids and the selecting of a qualified contractor. Or I'll let Steve give that away. But I'll let you ask any questions you may have.
I can, I can address some of the, some of the other things that are in there. So what's been happening with this is, you know, the the grant was awarded. It was not awarded for the full amount. There was, it was put in for 330,000. We got basically three fifths of what was asked for. There was a request for proposals went out. Those have all been reviewed. I participated in that with with staff from HRWC. A contractor has been, there were three different proposals from a total of nine different firms. They basically collaborated and submitted together based on their expertise. And so we've decided on one. We can't say who that is at this time. But all of three of the proposals were were very well qualified and they all had very good experience with removing dams, the full the full process from these preliminary studies to look at the the sediments upstream and scour on the the two bridges that are involved in this. And so what those, you know, this is, this is basically just solidifying that, you know, codifying that the relationship with Huron River, the Huron River Watershed Council. So that's what this is about. There's one thing in this that I really wanted to change, and we didn't get a chance to do this before it came in on the second page of this. Under number two, there's a date that this would extend through October of 2021. The way that the grant is set up and the the delay with the the grant funding and and picking the the engineering firm, the work is expected to go through October of 2021. And so what I wanted to do is amend this to go to November, because after the work is done, Huron River Watershed Council will have to review that work. There will be, you know, reports submitted and all that. So that's the timeline. But there may be other things that need to be done in that month coming after that. So I'd like to change this to November of 2021 for both of those dates. Both in the through at least October 21, 2021, and then the services beyond November 21. So change both of those to November. And that gives more completion for the Watershed Council without having to re-up this and get that done. But it clearly states that this this needs to go past that because there's future phases of this process.
Okay, yeah. Are you offering that as a friendly amendment?
I'm offering that as amendment.
Okay. Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Support.
So who made the motion originally?
Oh, right.
The two people who originally made the motion.
The the resolution was moved by Councilmember Simmons and supported by Councilmember Morgan.
Right. Do you accept it as a friendly amendment?
I do.
Okay. All right, is there any more further discussion? I see your hand, Mr. Jones Chance.
So is this move, is this motion to amend the resolution to include a date change in the memorandum of understanding?
Yeah, this, this is, yes. I'm not sure how you do that parliamentary wise, because it's not actually in the
Resolution?
It's in the, not in the resolution, but in the MOU itself, so.
Mr. Barr, could you help us with that, please?
Yes, this is fine. What Councilmember Wilcoxen is saying is he wants to amend the underlying document, change the date, and that's fine if everyone agrees. That's a resolution that will prove the agreement has changed.
All right, thank you. Is there any other discuss, further discussion? Okay, seeing.
The amendment?
Well, no, it's a friendly amendment and we just learned we don't have to vote on the on the friendly amendment. So I'm, any discussion on the resolution itself?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, Mr. Jones Chance.
It looks, so we're sort of at the beginning stages of beginning to pay the city's portion of this. What sort of risk, you know, in anyone's opinion, is there that we might go over budget? And if so, what do we do if that happens?
At this point, we've committed $500,000 to the to the overall project, and this is the first payout with respect to that. To at $33,000 each of the, each of the grants that are being sought. So this is the first round of the DNR grant. And the DNR understands, you know, the way these dam removals happen is that there are multiple rounds of of grants. And we're looking at other sources of funding besides the DNR. But the DNR, you know, when you look at something like the Boardman Dam, so near Traverse City, there were, there were several dams on the Borden River that were removed. It's a multi-year process and they they fully expect, and we've already Daniel Brown from the Huron River Watershed Council has already submitted a pre-proposal for the next round. And they very much expect that this is going to take more time to do this, at least two to three years, to get the preliminary studies done before you can actually think about doing the work of doing the deconstruction on the dam. So the DNR is expecting that we were going through. They've already accepted the pre-proposal and and encouraged the Watershed Council to submit for the next round of funding. So this this agreement is just for this particular phase. We'll have another round with the DNR. We're looking at other sources of funding. I just got an email last night for an interview for a grant that would pay for the city's portion of the public engagement part of the DNR grant. So when we, when we submitted the DNR grant, there was a section that the that the city was responsible for, and that was the public engagement involved in it. Here on River Watershed is the the technical advisor. We deal with the the public engagement. And so we submitted a grant that the, we have an interview for that, and that's like $10,000. And we think that's more than enough to do the the plan that we have submitted with the DNR grant. So at this point, it looks like we're in pretty good shape. We've got $5,000, $500,000 committed. This is only $33,000 for this. As the next round goes through, again, it's going to be about a 10% matching kind of thing. And so as we go through with that, you'll see this come up. But the real concern and and a lot of people have voiced this is that we're going to get nickel and dime to death on this. And and we're very cautious of that going through this process. And certainly we want to make sure that 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 doesn't happen. And at this point, $30,000 for this for this portion of this, I think we contributed more to the feasibility study than we're doing to this. And the feasibility study was only a total of 128,000 or so. So this is, this is considerably smaller than what we contributed to that. So. Did I answer the question?
So is the feeling that at this point it doesn't look like we will go over budget?
Or that if we do,
there'll be a way to to save it and actually complete the project?
Right. And this part of the project, you know, when when the feasibility study was done, there were a lot of questions that people had after that. And this part of this phase of this part of the removal is answering all of those questions. You know, people had questions about the sediments and they had questions about what it was going to have from the bridge. There was a section here about, you know, scour on some of the the private landowners. And that's being addressed in the RFP as well. So those things will come out. But at this point, I don't think we're in, you know, anywhere near, since this is the first outlay of of seeing that we're going to go over budget.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing then, Mr. Ling, would you call the role, please?
Did we get the, I'm sorry, did we get the friendly amendment straightened out?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
No.
Motion carries with six yes and one no.
All right, thank you. Council. Next item.
Council, next item on the agenda are liaison reports, the first being SEMCOG update.
We had a SEMCOG meeting last, executive meeting last Friday, and I will send the notes from that meeting to council.
Next item under liaison reports is Watts.
We had a meeting last week. And I think one of the things that I wanted to mention was aspect that we were talking about, I think, with it during goal setting about, you know, regional transportation and, you know, regional transportation is still, you know, talked about and and they're still looking, you know, that studying, you know, transit from Ann Arbor to Detroit. And, you know, having stops in between and what it would mean, you know, to the region. So, I mean, that's stuff that's still being talked about and looked to for the future. So even though, you know, our passenger rail train stuff has been set off to the side, there's still, you know, the hopes for, you know, transit or regional, you know, train travel through our city via this, you know, regional transit option. So that's my main report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, next item is Urban County.
No meeting.
Ypsilanti Downtown Development Authority.
Had a great meeting last week and we signed the Riverside Arts Center lease and options agreement.
Friends of Rutherford Pool.
We haven't had a meeting since the last thing. It'll be really next month.
Okay, council, next item on the agenda is boars and commissions nominations. There are two nominations for the HRC, Olivia Hill and Clete McGlocklin. And those will be appearing on the next agenda for approval.
Thank you.
Next item following that is council proposed business.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Jones Chance.
I don't have any proposed business this week.
All right, thank you. Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, I have a few things. First, I wanted to see if someone could support two renominations to the Arts Commission. Garrett Schuman and Gina Thompson are both up for to be reappointed. When the commission was formed, they were staggered terms. So they are up. Is anybody interested?
I would support both of them.
Great.
They're both very good people, by the way.
They are, they are. So awesome, cool. So Andrew, would that be on the next agenda as well?
Correct, that'll be on the next agenda, agenda for approval.
Approval. Great, great, great. And there may or may not be an opening. I think we're waiting to hear back from the, from another person. And then the clerk's going to let me know after that. And then I just wanted to add that I know during our goal setting, I had mentioned just like general sidewalk issues. I just wanted to bring up, and I don't know which staff member would be responsible for kind of looking into this, but the sidewalk along the way to the Frog Island Trail by the ladder company, I've just gotten complaints from residents. So I'm hoping that someone can look into that and see who, you know, who's responsible and how we can kind of expedite that. Especially since we have, you know, some upgrades that have been made to that trail and we want people to get there safely while they're walking from the neighborhoods and all of that. So I think that's all I have tonight.
Is that the sidewalk on the west side of the street?
You know, I should have gotten my ducks in a row before bringing it up because I'm really bad at directions.
No, is it? No, is it on the side of the park or is it on the ladder?
Yes, it's on the side of the park.
Okay, so that's the west side.
West, yes.
All right, thank you. Ms. Simmons?
I actually don't have anything today either.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wilcoxen?
Yeah, I've got a a couple of things I want to talk about. One, I was running through Frog Island today, this morning at about 6:00. And the lights over the new sidewalk are working. And it was like, whoa, wait a minute, I can see where I'm going. And and it's smooth and I'm not going to trip and fall into the river. So that was kind of cool. I was skeptical of having the lights there, but it it was actually a very nice, I think, the lights.
I was skeptical of having the lights there, but it, it was actually a very nice, I think the lights actually illuminate. Through Frog Island, so you can see from the sidewalk all the way over to the parking lot. So hopefully this, you know, safety measure will, will encourage people to use the park. More throughout the day. I, I just wanted to give a thank you to Chris, Christopher Jacobs for the work that he's been doing with me and the Watershed Council. In terms of the, the public engagement and, and keeping abreast of the. The request for proposals and also to Scott Slager, who has been attending those as well. I want to give you an update on the public engagement. There, there was a plan put in with the, the DNR grant. We submitted with the, with the help of our Sustainability Commissioner Beth Gibbons. We submitted a, a grant proposal to the National League of Cities to address this under. Their city resiliency program. I got an email last night saying that we're in the, we've made it through the first round, they, they now go through with the, with an interview. Chris and I are, are talking about who to be included in that interview, it's basically half an hour and they, and they checked that, so. I think we're in a good position for that, there were a lot of applications. And I think the, the grant we submitted is, is fairly good, we have a very clear program for that. So I'll let you know, we're, we're trying to schedule that for next week and then. I get back to you, probably not by the second, but the meeting after that and let you know what's going on with that, but hopefully, you know, that would be ten thousand dollars. That would cover the cost of facilitators and along with that comes. A lot of resources from the National League of Cities, they have, they have a lot of really smart people working there and they partner with another organization. That is going to lend expertise as well. So with that, you know, we can move forward with the, the meetings that are planned to engage the public and get their input on, on the dam, so. And I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proton Brown?
I actually don't have anything this evening.
All right, thank you. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything this evening, I just want to say my hope that the city manager and her family are recovering well from COVID. They were struggling a little bit past couple of weeks, so I hope they're doing well, I have no business, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I didn't know that. The city manager's family was struggling through that, but I'm glad to see her here and hope the rest of the family is doing well and better and well, so. Okay. I think the mayor's remarks are next. Correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
Okay, I don't, I don't really have anything, I've got one thing. A resident called me today that wanted to come and make some comments. Wanted to have some comments they wanted to make to counsel. However, that person does not at this time have internet or access and was willing and. The normal places like the library or wherever are unavailable. How do we accommodate residents since we're having virtual meetings? That really have, and this might be a question for Mr. Barr, I'm sure, how do we accommodate those people? One of the suggestions that came forth in the conversation today was that the resident write out. Their comments and. Get them to me and I would pass them on to the clerk to read during. The audience participation time, that was just one idea. I don't know how we could handle that. Mr. Barr?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and I think Andrew may have some things to say about this also, but there's a couple of ways. One is letters or written comments are always available for a city council. The second thing is they can call in on telephone and although they won't be able to see the proceedings, they'll be able to listen and can comment that way.
Okay, thank you. Andrew, did you have anything to add to that one?
That was pretty much what I was going to say, I, I, on the notice, it does include the, there's two toll-free numbers that the, the, the city has available. And with that, they would just need to enter the meeting ID and then they'd be able to participate via telephone. Or if they'd like, they can just submit comments to me in writing and I will be, and I'll make sure to include that in the council meeting.
All right, thank you very much, okay. That's pretty much it that I have and I think. For this evening, city manager, I think.
Um, I don't have any comments tonight. Looking at the goal setting summary, I hope all of council is looking at it too. So that we can bring a set of. Goals. In a resolution form yet for council to consider. And. Also, I see Councilmember Jennifer raising her hand, I had a question about when the, when we were going to receive the. Evaluation form for ourselves, I think she said we can do a self and also, so that's it for me tonight, I don't want to talk a lot, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I was just gonna actually, if you don't mind, Mayor, if I could just share.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna remind everybody that I think we had designated the thirty-first to have those reviews back to me. And then I'll put those together and then get with. Councilmember Morgan and Mayor Proton Brown to finalize everything and then we can set a time in a meeting and. City manager and city clerk, certainly I can, Andrew, you should have that copy, right? Could you forward it to the city manager if you wanted to use that to do the self-review?
I, I thought it was determined that the city clerk and the city manager weren't being, weren't doing the self-reviews, but I can definitely forward that along. I may, I may stake it.
I guess I'd have to rebook back the notes, I mean, because we talked about different versions of that, but. I don't know if. Anybody else recalls what we are, but.
I thought we said we, we were going to do that, but.
The, that's perfectly fine, I'll, I'll make sure to get that over to the city manager.
Okay.
I have a question. I don't know, so. I wonder if I missed an email, did we get? Okay.
Yeah, council or city ma, city clerk, Halanga had sent those out at the same date, night of that meeting, but. Clerk Halanga, perhaps you could resend those to everybody?
Please do, because I don't recall receiving it either.
I got it.
My email's been so messed up, so it's.
Yes, I'll, I'll forward those shortly.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Um, I just wanted, I forgot something in my, in my comments earlier, it's just like, we had spoken. Last year. About liaisons for the commissions and that hasn't come on our agenda yet, so I'd like people to think about that, I'd like to bring it to the, to the next agenda. We haven't discussed how the nomination process, process was going to work, so if that is appropriate at that time to have the discussion. About how we're going to do that and then move forward with that, we were waiting for. The seat in Ward One to be filled before we address that and then we've got goals and all that stuff, so I'd like to have that on the agenda for the next term, just as.
Thank you, yes. And we were waiting for that seat to be filled and. Just slipped out of the mind with other things that were going on, so thanks for being, appreciate it. Okay, uh, the next item, uh, Mr. Halanga, do we have any communication tonight?
Um, Mayor, no, there are no communications tonight, so the next item is just the adjournment.
All right, do I have someone to make that motion? Or should I just declare this meeting adjourned?
Support.
It's been moved in seconds that the meeting be adjourned. May all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I just want to end with, I had set a goal this afternoon that we would be done by eight-thirty and it's only eight-twenty. So love is the answer, everybody stay safe, stay well and. Stay healthy. Good night.
Do you know?
I know you, I was wrong, I was wrong.